We are live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise as you're able and join me in welcoming the city council and the playing of the national anthem and the reading of the invocation.
Would you please remain standing as I read the invocation to begin tonight's meeting? As we come together today, we recognize the great responsibilities that are laid upon us. Our council always strive to understand the needs of the people we serve and to use power wisely and well. We acknowledge the rich history of this land, which includes the Anishonobi and Hodoshoni peoples. Today, there are many First Nations, Maity and Inuit peoples who live or work in this city. The intent of this acknowledgement is to recognize our responsibility to use and take care of these lands responsibly and respectfully while remembering the generations past and considering the generations yet to come. We respect and seek to continue and promote the longstanding relationships with this area's First Nations, the Six Nations of the Grand River First Nation, and the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, and the indigenous peoples who reside within the city of Branford. Let us also not forget those who've served our community and who are no longer with us so that we can continue to do the work that we must in their memory. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councillor Samwell.
Present.
Councillor Hunt.
Present.
Councillor Martin.
Here.
Councillor Caputo.
Present.
Councillor Sikoli.
Here.
Councillor Van Tilborg.
Here.
Councillor Carpenter.
Here.
Councillor Sluss.
Present.
Councillor McCurry.
Here.
Councillor Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
I'm here.
Through the chair, roll call has been taken.
Okay. So we're going to determine which items will be separated tonight for discussion purposes. We already have separated item 12.31, the proposed right of access from Wayne Gretzky Parkway, and that's because Councillor Caputo will be bringing an amendment forward. We also have 12.4.1, which is zoning by law amendment, PZ 1225 133, read duffered out, and that's because we have some delegations. And I believe, Councillor Van Tilborg, you have one you'd like to separate as well.
That is correct, 12.3.8 transit fares.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of knew that coming in. So anybody else want anything separated? Well, Councillor McCurry.
12.2.2.
That's the Enkappen Network Report.
I believe you recognize me, Mr. Mayor, so 12.3.4, I'm the one with the dark hair.
12.3.4, City of Branford Real Estate Practice and Policy. And Councillor McCurry, I want to make sure, so that was 12.2.2? One that you wanted separated.
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good, okay. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no other requests for separation. Councillor Caputo, if you could move the motion then to approve the items that have not been separated.
Moved by myself, seconded by my wardmay, Councillor Sluss, that all items contained within the committee reports, items 12-1 to 12-4, not separated for discussion purposes, be approved.
Mr. Clerk, please read the title of the items that we're voting on.
Through the chair, the following items are subject to the vote, starting from the committee of the whole operations report, 12-1-1, Branford Airport Board Report, 12-1-2, City Grants 2025 Annual Report, 12-1-3, Empowering Youth Strategy Annual Update, 12-1-4, Healthy Aging Strategy Annual Update, from the Social Services Report, 12-2-1, lease of 3 to 9 West Street, 12-2-3, Housing Stability Winter Sheltering Plan, from the Committee of the Whole Planning and Administration Report, item 12-3-2, Public Consultation Task Force Report, 12-3-3, Creating Awareness for Gender-Based Violence Through Public Spaces, 12-3-5, Addressing the Impacts of Vacant and Derelict Buildings and Properties, 12-3-6, Recognizing Terry Fox, 12-3-7, Support for Restore Order and Calling for Coordinating Action on Homelessness, Public Safety and Dignity. Those are all the items that are subject to the vote. All items not separated for discussion purposes, cares unanimously recorded, vote of 11 to 0, members of council voting in favor are as follows, Councillors Sullivan, Sluss, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tilborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Okay, we don't have any statutory public hearings on the agenda tonight, but we are very fortunate to have some recognitions of achievement, and that's a part of our monthly council meeting where we acknowledge residents, city employees, and others who have done something exemplary, which calls for recognition by city councils. So we have three of those tonight, and I'm going to come down and, because there is a presentation I'd like to make as well. So I'll be down in a minute.
Okay, first, we're going to recognize city employee. And at the city of Branford, we really encourage our employees, so I'm sure many employers do, to improve their qualifications, improve their education, improve their performance. We are an organization that is dedicated to excellence. So when we have someone that has obtained a high standard as an employee, we like to recognize that. And so tonight, it's my great pleasure to celebrate one of our own here at the city of Branford, Shelley Conkle, Senior Building Official with the city of Branford. And Shelley, I know that you don't like to be, the spotlight shining on you, but we're going to shine the spotlight on you, so come on up as I talk about you. There's a lot to talk about here. It's all good, Shelley. Earlier this year, at the Ontario Building Officials Association Annual Meeting and Training Session, Shelley received the prestigious Pillar of the Chapter Award, an honor presented to members who have made exceptional contributions to their chapter, their profession, and the building industry as a whole. The Pillar of the Chapter Award recognizes individuals who've demonstrated outstanding leadership, dedication, and who've left a lasting and positive impact on the building community. For more than 35 years, doesn't look like it'll be 35 years, Shelley, Shelley has proudly served the city of Branford, and she currently serves as the Grand Erie Chapter Chair for the Ontario Building Officials Association. Through her mentorship, professionalism, and commitment to excellence, Shelley has strengthened not only our local chapter, but the entire profession across the province. She's been a mentor and a motivator to countless building officials, encouraging them to pursue professional designations, take on volunteer roles, and continue expanding their knowledge. Her dedication to supporting others and promoting high standards of practice in her profession truly make her a pillar of her field. To provide a bit of context, the Ontario Building Officials Association was founded in 1956. It's a not-for-profit organization that upholds professional standards in the administration of the Ontario Building Code. The city of Branford's Building Department, together with the counties of Branton, Norfolk, and Haldeman, make up the Grand Erie Chapter, which was recognized this year with multiple awards for excellence. Shelley's leadership and longstanding commitment have played a key role in those achievements. And we've been very fortunate and lucky to have Shelley working for our community and our city. On behalf of city council, the residents of Branford, it's my honor to recognize Shelley for her outstanding accomplishment and for her remarkable service to our community. Let's recognize Shelley. And Shelley, we have the mayor's certificate, which is symbolic of support from both the mayor's office and city council and the city organization for everything you have done and continue to do for our organization and the city. Okay, now we've got some firefighters to recognize. So we're going to recognize firefighters Brendan Khan and Derek Slatt. So come on up and stand up. So it's my privilege to recognize, we don't have just one of you tonight, Brenda Khan and Derek Slatt from the Branford Fire Department for their extraordinary courage and swift action in saving a life while off duty. Their professionalism and instinct to help even when they're not on the job should make all of us very proud. Last month, Brendan and Derek came upon a serious motorcycle collision in Burford, where a motorcyclist had sustained life-threatening injuries. Without hesitation, Brendan stepped in to provide first aid and reassurance to the injured rider. Derek soon arrived soon after, and together with Brendan and a Hamilton firefighter who also stopped to help, they worked to stabilize the motorcyclist, comfort the driver of the other vehicle, and secure the scene until emergency crews arrived. According to Captain Todd Owen of the Burford Fire Department, the motorcyclist would not have survived without their quick response and coordinated efforts. On behalf of the city of Branford, I want to extend our heartfelt thanks and congratulations to Brendan and Derek for their bravery and their commitment to public safety. Unfortunately, Derek wasn't able to join us this evening, but we want him to know how much his actions and his ongoing service are deeply appreciated. Brendan, please accept this recognition. I'm not going to drop the mic this time. Derek? Okay. Okay. Take this one. Yeah.
Take Derek.
We'll take Derek's. Oh. And also yours, Brendan. We'll hold yours up. There we go.
There we are, we'll figure it out.
Want to take that one for him? Thanks. You know, we're very lucky to have so many talented and committed and dedicated first responders, not just fire, but of course, police and paramedics as well. So with that, we're going to move on to, this past several weeks was Local Government Week, and we're very fortunate to have Morgan. Where's Morgan? There's Morgan Kye. Grade five, come on up here, Morgan. Morgan's a grade five student from St. Gabriel Elementary School. And part of Local Government Week, our city clerks department reached out to local elementary schools, including James Hillier Public School, that's where my daughters went, and St. Gabriel Catholic Elementary School, and invited grade five students to participate in an art contest. Students were asked to illustrate something they appreciate about our city that makes Branford a great place to live, learn, and play. So tonight, I'm pleased to recognize a few of the young artists. Please join me in welcoming Morgan, a grade five student from St. Gabriel. Let's give her a big hand. And Morgan's artwork, which was beautifully captured Harmony Square, one of our city's beloved gathering places. There it is, right there. Pretty good, Morgan. And alongside her drawing, she wrote, "Harmony Square is a great community center in winter and summer. I think we should have more places like Harmony Square." So Morgan, I want to thank you for your creativity and so caring so much about your community and feeling passionate about your community and doing some really great artwork. It's beautiful. So you also are going to get a mayor's certificate. And this is to Morgan, and it says, "On behalf of the city of Branford, we offer sincere congratulations to Morgan in recognition of winning the Local Government Week Drawing Contest 2025."
Let's take my hand? There we go. Pictures. Oh, we're over here now. And mom.
All right. Yes, that is a beautiful drawing of Harmony Square. So we also have a number of grade five students here from James Hillier Public School. And I'm, so I'm very pleased, and we have a lot of their artwork around the council chambers here. I'm very pleased to welcome some of the talented students from Mr. Imgren's grade five class at James Hillier Public School, and they're all here with us today at the front row. And their inspiring artwork, you see it displayed through the council chambers, and I think it's a great reflection of how our young residents, how they see Branford and how they experience Branford through their eyes. And so their artwork, they've captured many of the places, the peoples, and the moments that make Branford truly special. It's inspiring to see their creativity and the pride that they have in the city that they call home. So on behalf of city council, I want to thank all the students who participated in the art contest and for helping us celebrate Local Government Week. That means everybody claps. And so we do have a certificate for the grade five students from James Hillier Public School. Who would like to come up? Well, okay, come on all up, we'll, we'll take a big picture. Wow, I think that's, that's one of the best council meetings in months, I'll tell you. So what we're going to do now is we're going to take a short break because the council members would like to come down as well to see the artwork and talk for a few minutes to the students, and I'm sure some of you would like to be somewhere else than sitting here for the next couple hours. So council members, why don't we take a 10-minute break so everybody can come down and congratulate
Council members, we're going to be resuming the council meeting in about a minute. All right, so we'll resume the council meeting. And we'll move into proclamations. There are four proclamations on tonight's agenda. Council McCurry, could you please move all the recommendations to your secondaire? And if you'd read the first proclamation.
Indeed, I shall, Mayor. Just give me a moment here to call this up. Proclamation so moved by myself, seconded by Council Martin. And let me read the first proclamation, number eight point one, which concerns Rett syndrome awareness day. Whereas Rett syndrome is a rare genetic neurological disorder that occurs almost exclusively in girls and leads to severe impairments affecting nearly every aspect of the individual's life. Rett syndrome occurs worldwide in one out of every 10,000 female births and is even rarer in boys, but not impossible. Rett syndrome is usually recognized in children between the ages of six to 18 months as they begin to miss developmental milestones or lose abilities they had already gained. And whereas throughout their lives, these courageous individuals will need total care and constant support from their family. They will combat many medical challenges. They may have seizures, osteoporosis, scoliosis, breath holding, hyperventilation, nutritional problems, and much more. Aproxia, the inability to motor plant, is one of the most challenging aspects of Rett syndrome, as well as loss of speech. And whereas in 1999, it was discovered that Rett syndrome is primarily caused by a sporadic mutation in the MECP two gene on the X chromosome. And since this discovery, there are many research projects taking place across Ontario and Canada. And whereas there is no Canadian Rett syndrome association, the Ontario Rett syndrome association is members from many provinces across Canada and through donations and fundraising efforts have been able to fund the Canadian Rett syndrome registry, funding over $678,000 in Canadian Rett syndrome research and funded support Rett clinics in Ontario. Currently, the Rett syndrome clinics provide critical, direct support to families and their loved ones regarding care and management. Now therefore be it resolved, the council of the corporation of the city of Bradford hereby proclaims October 29 as Rett syndrome awareness day in the city of Branford.
Thank you, and Councillor Sikoli, if you could read proclamation eight point two, please.
Yes, thank you. Whereas November is Women Abuse Prevention Month and November 25th is the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women. And whereas violence is the greatest gender inequality rights issue for women, girls, and gender diverse individuals. Our community is committed to ending femicide and all forms of gender-based violence. And whereas femicide rates are on the rise in Ontario with over 26 femicides in Ontario since November 26, 2024. And whereas last year in Ontario, on average, every six days, a woman or child lost their lives due to men's violence. And whereas Indigenous, Black, South Asian, and Southeast Asian women and girls continue to experience high rates of volume, including femicide, and on the 2023-2024 Ontario Femicide List. And whereas this month and throughout the 16 days of activism against gender-based violence, we acknowledge our community's support of the Wrapped in Courage campaign and commitment to ending gender-based violence. And whereas there is an urgent need for greater investment and action to end gender-based violence in our community and throughout Ontario by all three levels of government. And whereas a Wrapped in Courage campaign flag will be raised in during Women Abuse Prevention Month in recognition that the courage of a woman alone is not enough, and it takes an entire community to end gender-based violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the city of Branford hereby proclaims November 25, 2025, as the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women and urge all citizens to recognize this day by taking action to support survivors and becoming part of Ontario-wide efforts to end gender-based violence.
Thank you. Now, Councillor Samuel, if you'd read proclamation eight point three.
Hindu Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Branford is home to a vibrant and diverse community that includes a significant Hindu population. And whereas the Hindu community has made invaluable contributions to the cultural, social, and economic and educational fabric of our community, of our city and our country. The celebration of Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity to recognize and appreciate the rich traditions, values, and teachings of the Hindu culture. Now therefore be resolved, the council of the corporation of the city of Branford hereby proclaims November as Hindu Heritage Month and encourages all residents to learn, educate, and engage in activities that promote understanding and appreciation of the contributions made by the Hindu community to our city's diversity and inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councillor Hunt, if you'd read the last proclamation, please.
Transgender Day of Remembrance, November 20, 2025. Whereas transgender day of remembrance is an, excuse me, international annual observance on November 20 that honors the memory of the transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming persons who are disproportionately targeted and killed for living authentically and courageously. And whereas it is everyone's responsibility to ensure transpersons can live full lives of dignity without fear of violence or harm. And whereas trans individuals are valuable members of every community, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the city of Branford hereby proclaims November 20, 2025 as transgender day of remembrance in the city of Branford.
Right, Mr. Clerk, would you please take the vote on the proclamations?
The approval of all proclamations carries unanimously on a recorded vote of nine to zero. Members of council voting in favor are as follows: Councillors Sless, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tobork, Samuel Carpenter, Martin Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Right, we'll move into delegations. We have four delegations this evening regarding the planning application re 133 Dufferin. But before we hear from the four registered delegates, we did receive two late requests of council, and of course, this would require a waiver of the rules that came from Rashika Angreesh and Joni Brown, who are the applicant and the agent. And if we're willing to hear from them despite their late registration, two rules would have to be waived by council, one to allow late submission and the other to allow another speaking opportunity. And if council should agree to do that, my position would be, it would just be one delegation, not two. So does somebody want to move that? Moved by Councillor Carpenter, seconded by Councillor Samuel. Mr. Clerk, if you would please bring up what the wording of the resolution has two parts. So one is that we waived the code to allow the delegate past 90M deadline and that we're allowing a delegation who appeared before the planning committee. So, any debate? I'd like to say one thing. I think there's a deficit in our procedural rules where generally the principle of fairness and a fair hearing generally allows an applicant to have the final say after hearing from all of those opposed. And the drawback with our council procedure is that after a planning committee meeting, the applicant, of course, does have the right to respond. But then when it comes to council, others can speak against it, and that's fine. But then it seems to me that it's not procedurally fair that we don't allow the applicant, if they want, an opportunity to respond. That's just basic natural justice. So without any other debate, yes, Councillor Sikoli.
The one item that I guess I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is that at Planning Committee, we gave quite a detailed explanation of what could and couldn't be done past that planning meeting. We did explain to everyone who was present that there was not going to be an opportunity to come speak again. And so I fear that there may have been quite a few people who were present at the planning committee who would have taken the opportunity to come here tonight and speak again. But they were told at planning that they weren't, so they weren't allowed to do that. So in, I guess, in the spirit of all fairness, I'm not going to be supporting this, and that's why. So, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Sless.
Along the same vein, Mr. Mayor, I had a number of residents that live in that area that spoke at the planning hearing that wanted to speak tonight. And unfortunately, I told them they couldn't. And because that is our policy and that those are the rules that we engage with. And so therefore, they had to scramble and try and find someone to fill in that's probably not as knowledgeable as they were, simply because they live right there, right beside whatever, they're right in that neighborhood. And they weren't given that opportunity. So I agree with Councillor Sikoli. If we're talking fairness, then it should be fairness to everybody. And I believe that this tilts the scale in one direction or the other, so I won't be supporting it either.
Councillor McCurry.
Mayor, thank you. Waiving the rules in a bifold manner today is something we've never done before. If members of this council have issues with the procedural rules that apply to planning, then let them bring forward amendments to those rules, and we can deal with that at a later date. To my recollection, we've never waived the rules to allow somebody to speak twice, whether that be committee of the whole, then council, or planning then council. And I see no reason to change our past processes and practices tonight, so I won't be supporting this either.
Councillor Carpenter.
So am I to understand, Mr. Mayor, that there's nobody speaking today in opposition to that proposal?
Yes, if I might just respond. So the general rule is this, that if you're a delegate at the planning committee, you can't come back and delegate here again at council. If you did not appear as a delegate at the planning committee, because you couldn't make it for whatever reason, you can come to council and you can delegate. And you know, that's, to me, that's the problem. Because sure, you can have somebody that might want to speak twice. But the problem is you'll have somebody speaking against an application for the first time at a council meeting, and they may bring up something that wasn't brought up at the planning committee meeting. And it's just procedural fairness that the applicant have an ability to respond to that.
Yeah, I understand that the question was, do we have members from the public here requesting to speak in opposition to the application?
Yes.
Okay, so the speaking to it, I've always had difficulty with limiting the amount of time the public can speak to us. We're council, we should be always open to public giving us their opinions, pro and con against any issues. That's our job is to listen to the public, so that's why I'm supporting the resolution. Not because I'm for or against the application, but because I think that we should always listen to members of the public.
Okay, call the vote. Requires a two-thirds vote. Oh, sorry, Councillor Martin.
Thank you. A question through the staff. There's two sections here. The first section is the delegate that applied past night. Did they speak at the planning committee, or is that someone new?
Through the chair, the two individuals that council is waiving the rules for are the applicant and the agent. So they made a presentation at the planning committee.
So they both spoke at planning. Okay, thank you.
Okay, call the vote.
The motion to waive the rules is lost on a recorded vote of four to seven. Members in favor, Councillors Sullivan, Hunt, Carpenter, Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Councillors Sless, McCurry, Van Tobork, Samuel, Martin Caputo, and Sikoli.
Okay, so we'll move into the delegations that have registered and their work for. I'd like to remind those in the meeting that we have the following rules of decorum that apply as set forth in the city's procedural bylaw, and they are: That no person shall display any sign, banner, or placard in the meeting room other than materials that, in the opinion of the chair, are legitimate audiovisual aids necessary in connection with any presentation made to council. Two, all persons present shall use polite and respectful language and shall refrain from the use of any language or the making of any gesture that is disrespectful or offensive. Three, all persons addressing council shall speak only on the subject in debate and shall not speak on any other subject. Four, no person shall applaud participants in debate or engage in conversation or behavior that may disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. And I can also tell you that as a chair, I'm going to rule out of order anyone who speaks to the applicant in the way in which they conduct business. That's not the purpose of a planning hearing. The purpose of a planning hearing is to focus on the proposed use and whether that complies with what it is that the community wants and if it's in accordance with proper planning procedure. It's not a debate about, that's intended to focus on the applicant personally or how they conduct their business. I wanted to make that clear, that if someone wants to delegate to that particular issue, I will rule you out of order. So with that, we're going to move on to the first delegate, who I believe is Caitlin, Caitlin Rafferty. So Caitlin, if you'd come forward. And I think you know, having probably watched the planning committee, the same rules apply here. You have 10 minutes to present inclusive of questions. So just provide us confirmation of your name and your address. So you have to push the button until the red light comes on. There, you're good.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Rafferty. I'm at 44 Edgerton Street. All right. Okay, good evening, council. My name's Caitlin Rafferty, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my neighbors, specifically all of these red dots that signed a petition, legal voters that are against and opposed to a rezoning. This property lies in a stable residential block directly beside Dufferin Park. Branford's official plan allows neighborhood-supporting uses only when they complement the area and minimize the impacts. A commercial clinic operating from a house on a park's edge does neither. It changes the function of the property, introduces commercial traffic, and undermines the very residential character the plan is meant to protect. The rear parking lot touches the park fence where children play, approving a business that brings constant vehicle turnover, headlights, and idling exhaust into the space defies common sense safety and city parks and recreational master plan. Families expect to find homes and green space there, not a revolving door office use. The staff report itself admits that housing and transit provided no comments. That means the loss of two rental units, accessibility issues, and transit reliance were never evaluated. Without those reviews, council lacks the complete technical record the Planning Act requires before approving a zoning change. Two existing rentals would disappear in the middle of a housing crisis, contrary to both municipal and provincial housing objectives under Bill 23. The proposed eight parking spaces, three of them tandem, may meet minimum numbers but are functionally unworkable. Overflow will crowd Dufferin and St. Paul Ave, where park and school traffic already compete for space. Paper compliance is not the same as public safety. The bylaw labels the use of a medical clinic, once adopted, the psychotherapy-only limitation will be almost impossible to enforce. The city has no licensing mechanism to verify who practices there. That is classic spot zoning, a one-off commercial carve-out that invites copycat applications and erodes confidence in the official plan. Under Section 2 of the Ontario Planning Act, council must protect housing, ensure public safety, and support orderly development. This application fails all three tests. It proceeds without complete agency. It proceeds without complete agency consultation, contradicts provincial housing direction, and introduces commercial traffic beside a public park. Approving it would expose the city to appeal and likely reversal at the Ontario Land Tribunal. Residents are not opposing mental health care, we value it. We're opposing the wrong use in the wrong place. For the integrity of Branford's planning framework, for the safety of our park, our families, and to avoid unnecessary legal exposure, I respectfully urge council to refuse PZ twelve twenty-five for one thirty-three Dufferin Ave. Thank you for your time.
Hang on Caitlin, you might have, some members might have some questions for you.
Yes, of course.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, well, councillor McCrory.
Welcome, thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Would you say you're concerned about traffic conflicts?
Yes, um, well, there's a school right down the street, it's on the corner. And then the park is butts right against it. I'm concerned because um, I know my nephews and niece walk to the park. Um, and what if uh, that continual traffic or somebody's not paying attention? Um, just slides out and hits a child. Just, it's just um, it's such a busy park. I just worry about children's safety uh, foremost, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Carpenter.
Yeah, the zoning applications for medical clinics, so you're opposed to having a medical clinic in that location for the reasons you suggested, traffic and too close to the park and so forth?
Well, uh, it's a residential area. I'm pretty much opposed to having any business in that area. A Brant Ave is our area for um, uh, businesses. That is our kind of wh- what we've established thus far. Um, uh, and there's many other places. It's just not suitable. Uh, and then what happens when somebody else wants to have their business in there? We just gonna keep adding to our uh, this is a part of our community, we would like to keep it residential.
Thank you for your work. Well, thank you very much Caitlin.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to, uh, this was Ed, uh, Mr. Ed Houses' display. He went around and got everybody to sign those who are home. Thank you.
Yeah, just how many did you have on the petition? Sorry Caitlin, I've got a question for you. Yeah. So how many, how many names on the petitions? Is it three hundred and?
I've got two, and they're all in our ward, in the vicinity of Seton Park.
Right, great. Thanks very much. So we'll move on to our second delegate on the same subject matter, and that is Peter Moffett. So Peter, I'd ask you, uh, I think you can see what the routine is. We need you to state your name and your address and first of all, push the red button. And you have up till ten minutes to present to us.
I'm Peter Moffett. I reside at one forty-five St. Paul for the last twenty-seven years. We face the park and we face the driveway that uh, is concerned. I did submit a summary of my concerns uh, to the, to the councillors, and I think I, all of them received it. So I won't go through all of them, but I would like to come back to the traffic, parking, and safety issues, because I think they're fundamental. For the last twenty-eight years, the three or four cars in that driveway have been able to turn around and proceed out onto St. Paul in a frontward manner. If eight cars are parked in there at any time, that will be impossible. They will be backing out onto a position of the road where a right turn lane has just divided before the driveway to turn from uh, St. Paul onto Dufferin. It's less than thirty meters from the corner where s- schoolchildren for four schools, not just one, four schools uh, pass daily, uh, twice daily actually. But I'm more concerned about the closeness of the park to the main entrance to the park. Kids come around the corner on bikes and they're anxious to get to the wonderful park that you've created, and it's well-used. So when they come around the corner, they aren't paying attention to people backing out. And I know that people backing out are going to get hit, because we've had that happen several times in the twenty-eight years that I've lived there. So I really am concerned that there's a potential for tragic, tragic accidents uh, with people unfamiliar with the area trying to get their cars back on. You also should be aware that during rush hour, the traffic from Brant Ave is sometimes backed up to Dufferin for the stoplights, especially since the construction's been there, the hospital. So I would uh, urge you to consider the safety and the character of the community and uh, oppose the bylaw, propose the bylaw amendment.
Thank you Peter, may I have some questions for you? Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much Peter, we'll be dealing with this very shortly. Let's move on to our third delegate, Philip Mid- Midgley. Philip, you'd state your full name, please, your address, and then you'll have ten minutes to make your presentation, and don't forget to push the button. Great, thanks.
My name is Phil Midgley. I reside at thirty-eight Lauren Crescent. And I'm urging you to vote against rezoning one thirty-three Dufferin Ave for a medical use clinic. I want to make it uh, known that I value mental health care. As a retired school administrator, I know the importance of access to mental health support for our population, and I acknowledge that we are in a mental health crisis. My opposition is based on the location of the clinic, the combatability of business on Dufferin Ave, an entirely residential street, and the increased safety concerns with respect to traffic and pedestrian use. As well, I'm concerned about the long, the potential long-term effect of the dangerous precedent of rezoning our residents to commercial use in this area. Dufferin is a unique street in the city with its many heritage homes. At the planning committee, councillor Slus stated his concern that approving this request to rezone one thirty-three Dufferin could be the thin edge of the wedge when it comes to future rezoning applications that would further compromise the integrity of the neighborhood. One thirty-three Dufferin Ave is at the corner of a very busy intersection. Traffic entering and leaving the building will cause more problems to traffic flow. The driveway access to one thirty-three Dufferin Ave is into the right-hand turn lane on St. Paul, immediately adjacent to the intersection. Traffic volume is high, particularly during the peak hours when schools are opening in the morning or dismissing in the afternoon. Currently, cars are lined up from Christ the King to St. Paul's Avenue during these times. There are two elementary schools on Dufferin Ave and two others nearby. Traffic volume going in and out of the medical clinic will be much higher than it was with the former three residential units. As well, the day-to-day, sorry, the all-day and evening parking turnover of the clinic will put further strain on the nearby streets and potentially Dufferin Park. The proposed eight spaces of tandem parking is inadequate for the residential unit, the staff, the overlapping clientele at the proposed clinic. There's limited street parking available on St. Paul for the overflow that will be required. With increased traffic come increased safety concerns for the pedestrians in the neighborhood. Dufferin Ave in St. Paul has a lot of foot traffic, including students coming to and from the elementary schools and Branford Collegiate. The revitalized Dufferin Park, immediately adjacent to the property, attracts family and caregivers with young children, dog walkers and seniors. The park serves a num- a large number of tennis and pickleball players. It also has a multi-use community center. Dufferin and St. Paul are in one of the routes that the W. Ross McDonald School uses to train visually impaired students to walk in the public safely. Other concerns that have been voiced include removing affordable rental units for commercial space in a time of a housing crisis. The property owner knew the building at one thirty-three Dufferin was zoned for residential when she purchased it. There's no compelling reason to rezone this property for the use as a medical clinic. This action would be contrary to both local and provincial planning efforts to focus on protecting and growing the housing supply. Grand Ave, Morel, and Grand River, Grand River Ave are three streets in Homedale that are well-suited to commercial use without loss of residential units. Why is the city considering an application to reduce the number of residential units available in the city when there are clearly other locations that are properly zoned to accommodate this for-profit venture? When the report two zero two five dash four eighty was presented at the October sixteenth meeting of the planning committee, the staff, staff recommendation to rezone this property was unanimously rejected by all five councillors. At this meeting, many speakers presented their positions about the proposal to rezone one thirty-three Dufferin for medical use clinic. Only the Irish group representing the property owner and Ms. Brown, the property owner, spoke in support of the zoning change. All other speakers urged the city to reject the rezoning request. The council has been presented with a petition of three hundred names of residents opposing the rezoning proposal. Even Appendix E of the planning report reflects the overwhelming community opposition to rezoning. The will of the community to protect its residential identity, an identity that includes many heritage properties, is clear. Do not support this application to rezone. Do not set a precedent that could allow further incursion into the residential culture of the neighborhood. I urge council to support the unanimous recommendation of the planning committee and the community voice to reject this application for rezoning. Paraphrasing the language of the planning department report, I urge council to give regard to the overwhelming written and oral submissions received to oppose this application to rezone one thirty-three Dufferin Ave for a medical clinic. Thank you very much for your time.
Questions, councillor Carpenter.
Thank you for coming, very, very, very well-written presentation. Uh, so when you say you're, you're asking council to support the staff's recommendation to refuse the application?
Wha- what I said, sorry, what I said is that the um, support staff presented the recommendation and endorsed it. And the planning committee unanimously voted to oppose it.
Yeah, the, but the resolution before us is, is to, is to refuse the application. So you would like us to vote in favor of the resolution before us to refuse the application?
I'm opposed to the application to rezone the property. I'm sorry for the confusion.
I, I'm just trying to make it clear to all the members of council, you know that if we vote yes, it's to refuse the application. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you for the uh, direction.
Councillor McCrory.
Mayor, thank you. Mr. Midgley, welcome. Would you say that um, the um, application would be to the detriment of the safety of the kids in the neighborhood and would increase difficulties with traffic?
I mean, that's my big concern. Um, I, I live in the neighborhood. I'm not, I'm a few blocks away from the actual site. Um, but on my daily walking route, I go past that, that intersection at a variety of times of day. And certainly the park's incredibly well-used. Um, there's families there. Um, certainly in the summer, the park is full. Um, come school time now, there's preschool students, caregivers, parents there. Um, we're seeing more and more elementary-age students, um, elementary-age kids on scooters and bikes and so forth, zipping along sidewalks. Mr. Moffett alluded to the fact that you'd have to be backing up out of this parking space to get into traffic, and that, that would be the case. And that would be a concern of mine as far as the safety of the pedestrians.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
That takes us to ten minutes. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Very well-done presentation. So we'll move to our fourth delegate, and that is John Lockerty. John, if you'd like to come forward. State your name, your address, after you push the red button, and then you have ten minutes to make your presentation.
Hi, my name is John Dockerty. I currently reside at one two nine Wilk Street, which is in Homedale here in Branford. First off, uh, thank you for letting me participate this evening. And to lighten the mood and ease some tension, which I'm sure there is some in this room, I would like to open with an analogy that most of us here, and also to the many, many others outside of their own vicinities, has united us, if only for a brief time. Who watched that thriller of a Jays game last night? So many ups and downs, back and forth, the passion, wow! And in the end, after seventeen and a half innings, after all the Jays gave, it all came down to one pitch. Wouldn't it be great if you had a do-over? And that's not how it goes. Well, here we are tonight, we're in the bottom of the eighteenth inning, and it's our turn to pitch. And we've done just about all we can, but we get to deliver our final pitch and hope that it's successful. While we all agree that mental health issues are a great concern and the need for more resources is urgent to control this dilemma, we have to make smart decisions as to where they are set up, and if necessary, the motives. Safety should be near the top of the decision-making. I'm not inferring that all individuals with mental health issues pose a danger to society, but of late, a vast majority of crimes committed are traceable to mental health issues. The taxpayers of Branford entrusted you and those involved in building a safe, multi-use park on St. Paul Street where kids can be kids, where parents and grandparents don't have to look over their shoulder to ensure all is okay. This is what community is. Why possibly jeopardize this to satisfy one applicant who is looking to grow her business by adding a second location directly beside this park? With all the choice locations and areas that are currently zoned for business?
John, John, I've asked that, uh, we not personalize our?
Well, I, I apologize. I apologize.
So if you please stick to the planning issues.
Sorry, I apologize. This was written before I knew the rules. I, then I, I take that back. With all the um, with all the locate, choice, locations and areas that are currently zoned for business, why was this address chosen? I will do my best to refrain from anything personal. Thank you, Mayor. As you are aware, prior to the sale of one thirty-three Dufferin Ave, there were tenants that have since been forced to look for new residency in an already housing shortage market. All the while, demolition, construction, and renovations were started prior to receiving the final okay. I have to skip the next part? I'm not trying to be funny. Another concern for safety is the proximity to four elementary schools, one high school, and the blind school. Most especially Christ the King, in which students, some of them unaccompanied by parents, need to walk past the facility to get to and from school at an already busy intersection at St. Paul and Dufferin, lacking a crossing guard. And to add more vehicles entering and leaving appointments would only cause more congestion at school comings and goings, creating another safety concern. The decision you make today not only affects the matter before you in our ward, it could create a domino effect in all wards across this city. Are you prepared to do this all over again countless times? Set the precedent for what is allowed where. Methadone clinics, homeless shelters, just to name a few. Nobody wants them in their neighborhoods, yet it's happening. The need cannot outweigh the safety of your citizens. There is a time and place for everything? Well, this is the time and this is the place to do the right thing, make the right decision for my family and for yours. They are counting on it. Thank you.
So, John, uh, not seeing any questions, uh, want to thank you for coming out tonight and giving us your input.
May I make one final point off script?
Sure, you're still within ten minutes.
Good, because I had to.
As long as it relates to the planning.
It does relate to this. With regards to the opening of this matter, uh, there was the vote whether uh, participants were allowed to speak a second time or not allowed to speak a second time.
So we've already had that debate.
Yes, no, I, Mayor, if I may, um.
So you, you're here to delegate to the planning application itself. That issue's already been dealt with, so that's not on the table right now.
Okay, we'll leave, we'll leave it there.
Okay.
I'll let there's a next time.
Yeah, there's a next time, you can speak to it. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think that completes the delegations tonight. So we'll move on to, and just our members of the audience, we'll be dealing with the planning application in a very few minutes, but before then, we have some other business we have to attend to. So Counselors Sless, I understand you have the motion to receive the clerk's report and communication.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Caputo, that the clerk's report on communications for October twenty twenty-five be received.
Sorry about that. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
The clerk's report on communication carries unanimously on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, Van Toborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Right, we'll move on to minutes. I believe Counselor Sullivan, you have the motion to adopt the minutes listed on the agenda, and state your second, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Wardmaye Counselor Sikoli, that the following minutes be adopted, eleven point one point, I mean, eleven point one, City Council, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, eleven point two, Special City Council, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and eleven point three, Special City Council, Private and Confidential, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Any errors, missions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
The approval of the minutes carries unanimously on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, Van Toborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Mar, Caputo, and Mayor Davis.
All right, Counselor Hunt, if you could please move the motion to have the items that were separated placed on the floor for discussion. And state your second.
Yes, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Carpenter, that all items in the committee reports, items twelve point one through twelve point four, separated for discussion purposes, be approved.
Okay, so we'll take up the items that were separated. There are one, two, three, four. There's five of them. We'll deal with the one thirty-three Dufferin Ave matter first, as there were four delegations, and Counselor Caputo, start with you. And one speaking opportunity, five minutes each.
It's only one for five minutes?
One for five.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what's been presented in front of us tonight has been something that really holds dear to me. Dufferin Ave is a very aesthetically appealing, heritage-driven, and wonderful neighborhood. And as we've heard from the delegates this evening, Morale Street, Grand River Ave have various commercial opportunities that are there. What I want everyone to understand is that the planning department was well within their rights to be able to assess this and and grant at that time an opportunity for a business to be held here as we don't separate streets out of certain areas when we're actually putting together a zoning platform. So it was well within the opportunity there, and I applaud the city staff for doing their work there. They don't view it from a business performer. They just view whether or not it's going to be there to be able to to be what they believe is is part of the zoning amendment. But with that being said, the character of this neighborhood would be dramatically changed if we alter our processes and apply to having a business set up within this type of neighborhood. It could happen anywhere. It could happen on Lincoln Ave. It could be on, it could be on any street that's there. Wilkes, a house goes for sale, somebody buys it, then they put in a zoning application that they want to be able to put something in there, whether it be a massage parlor or a hairdressing studio or anything along those lines. And that's not what this, in my opinion, should be about. This is about residences who have invested a lot in their homes and to keep it this way. Housing certainly is a concern, and and to keep this as a housing venue would probably fit. But I do want to, you know, let everyone know that it could be rented to several tenants where we could have six or seven vehicles parked at that site on any given day. That can come in, it can come out, and so forth. So my my thought process isn't really on the traffic. It's more on the neighborhood itself. So I am supporting what's in front of us tonight, because remember, a yes vote means that the planning committee's turned it down, and that's how we're going to do it. So although I am a very pro-business individual, have been my whole life. So it's not about not having this business open or have success with it. I just don't want it to be put in that particular spot. And as I mentioned at the planning committee when I had a chance to speak, because their current location is really probably a thousand feet, if that, from where we are. Being a businessperson myself, if it was me, I would only operate under one going forward. So I will support it, and I hope that the rest of the council feels the same way. Thanks.
Counselor Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and I just really wanted to address everyone in the room. I think it's it's really it speaks to the pride in your neighborhood for all of you to be here today in support of what's before us. So I wanted to thank you for all that. The fact that someone went around and got three hundred signatures on a petition is also good for you, good for good for your neighborhood. And I'm, I don't have any skin in the game here. This is not in Ward Four. This is something that I myself got sixteen emails, and while I may not have responded, it was overwhelming to me what the what the neighbors in the neighborhood felt needed to be done here. And so I too would be very pleased to support, first of all, our staff's recommendation, but also the neighbors that that are here today. So thank you.
Any other speakers?
Counselor McCurry? Excuse me, Mayor. Well, I I supported the neighborhood during the planning committee meeting, and I'll support the neighborhood tonight, even though we have to remember that yes means no tonight, as it often does. So as I indicated at planning, there's a number of reasons to oppose this based on planning issues, certainly. Number one, we lose as a community a number of housing units in an already stressed housing market. Number two, this does not bode well for traffic patterns either on Saint Paul Avenue or Dufferin or the immediate neighborhood. And number three, it puts at risk the kids in this neighborhood from being run over by people backing out of that driveway. It just it just doesn't work for me. I think the other matter too, which is not a planning matter, but it's it's important, I think, for us to maintain the sanctity of our legacy neighborhoods in the city of Branford. And no neighborhood could have more more definition of what Branford was about in the eighteen hundreds than Dufferin Avenue, the homes of some of the people that built this community, that built industry in Branford, and it made this community one of the big manufacturing centers in the empire. So for those and other reasons tonight, I support the neighborhood and will not be supportive of this project going forward.
Counselor Sless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if you want to draw a crowd, just try and put a clinic in the middle of a neighborhood. It seems to work. It it's unfortunate, because I do have sympathy for the folks that own the property, and and they're trying to do what they do. And that's fine, and and I support what they do. I just don't support it where they want to do it. And and I think that's the problem that I'm faced with, and I'm sure around this table we're faced with. Firstly, before I forget, I would like to thank, I got a ton of email, as you can well imagine, on on this item. And I tried to respond as best I could. We don't have secretaries. We do it ourselves. And I don't think I got back to everybody. If I didn't reach back to you, I apologize for that, but the volume just didn't allow for things to happen the way I had hoped they would. I think from a planning perspective, this application fails, in my opinion, mainly because we're taking housing stock out of a crisis situation. We've got people wandering the streets because there's no place to live. And so what do we do to address that? We start converting houses that they could live in into something else that they can't live in. And I think that's contrary to what we're trying to do. It to me, it it's not logical. It doesn't make sense. And from a planning perspective, I think that bodes well for not supporting this application. As I said at the planning committee, it is the thin edge of a wedge. Once you've allowed someone in, the next someone that's standing behind them in line is going to have a very strong case to say, well, what about me? And I think once you've done that, you've opened a floodgate. And who knows what could happen? I don't know. Maybe nobody would come forward, but my sense would be that they would. So based on all of that and based on just common sense, it it just doesn't seem to be the right thing to do. So having said that, and I certainly haven't said it as eloquently as the emails that I received, you folks are very good writers. I won't be supporting the application, but I will be supporting what's before us is to refuse the application. And that's what's before us this evening, and that's what I'll be supporting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Carpenter? Thank you. We dealt with this at the planning meeting. Whenever we turn down an application, we have to, we're guided by the planning regulations handed down to us through the province and what the rules and procedures are. So we have to provide sufficient reasons for turning down an application. And one of the suggestions for the reasons is one that I believe is that the proposed development offends the character of the neighborhood in the way of parking and the way of traffic and the way of the protecting the heritage district of the homes. So it does offend, so I will be supporting the recommendation to not support the application.
I'll say a few words. So probably won't surprise those of you who know me that I don't necessarily always go with the wave, so to speak. I believe we're required by the Planning Act and what the province has done in regarding Planning Act applications that were to examine it analytically using the principles, proper planning principles. And the easy option, the easy out is to say, I'm not accusing anyone here of that, but the easy option for a councillor or mayor is to simply say, you know, there are two hundred people opposed to this, and I'm going to vote no. My preference is to examine the evidence and consider that in the context of the planning principles and also the nature of the neighborhood and the nature of the concerns that are raised. And I can tell you this, I wasn't at the planning committee meeting. I am a member of the planning committee, but I was attending a meeting of the Ontario Big City Mayor's Caucus, which is probably the most important organization that I belong to to be able to represent the interests of the city to our outside stakeholders. But what I did do was I did review the tape, the two-and-a-half-hour tape of the planning committee meeting. I read the planning applications submitted by our staff. I think I read it three times. I read the provincial planning statement, which is a very long document. I think I read that twice and talked to staff about it. I read and considered every single email and written submission submitted by the residents. And I must say, generally, I was quite impressed with the volume and the nature of the submissions. But I'm saying this too because I want you to know that I carefully considered everything that has been said regarding this application. And I will admit that through the day, as I was thinking about this, I kind of flipped back and forth as to what I thought about it. And so I decided that I would deal with the concerns that are raised and try and deal with them in an analytical way. So first of all, in reference to the the traffic issue, you know, my view of the traffic issue, I understand the concerns of the residents. But you know, when you look at what traffic a clinic will generate, especially one where, you know, generally, the sessions, I think, are probably about an hour in length. And so probably it's maybe five or six traffic movements per hour. That's like one every ten minutes. And that's really not a huge impact in the context of things upon traffic in a neighborhood if you have those kinds of movements, you know, five, six, or seven an hour. In fact, if you were to turn down an application because you're going to have traffic at that rate crossing a sidewalk, which might be near a park, I mean, there are a number of applications that you just simply wouldn't be approving. And actually, I think provincial planning principals would say that that would not be a sufficient reason to turn down this application. I considered the context of what residents have said about housing, and actually, I've got some pretty good news for you. In terms of housing, we here in Branford, we've been doing, we've been have a very sustained effort over the last four to five years. We were just recently rated A-plus by a provincial rating agency because we've exceeded provincial housing targets by two hundred and seventy-seven percent. We have coming on stream over the next several months, several hundred rental units. You see them on the West Street Hill, King George Road. You see them in Lower Downtown. The vacancy rate on rental has gone over the last three years from one point seven to now it's pushing two point three percent. And anything between two and three, you want nothing less than two, more than three is too much. So we're making headway on that issue, but I agree, we have to be concerned about our housing stock. And when I looked at the mental health issue, you know, you look at what's happening in our streets, and I think certainly expanding the mental health services in our community is critically important because much of what you see happening on the street has as its source, as its origin, not an issue of homelessness, but an issue many times rooted in mental health. And so on this particular application, I thought the mental health aspect overweight the fact you're taking two units out. However, I considered what Maria Fangjoy said. She took a very good examination of the provincial planning principles. I think she's right. I think the provincial planning principles, I disagree with staff on this issue. I don't think the provincial planning principles direct the outcome that staff have directed. Last thing I considered is Dufferin Ave. I've had lots of friends and work colleagues that have lived on Dufferin Ave. I've spent a lot of time in Dufferin Ave, both visiting my friends, relatives, and canvassing that street. There is something unique about it. And yes, you can still have home occupations, doctors, et cetera, on Dufferin Ave, but you have to live there to be able to make that exception. I thought the scale of this this proposal going into three to four therapists for building this size in this neighborhood would be a use that, in my opinion, would be incompatible with the nature of the neighborhood. So when I considered all the factors that I think were required to consider, I felt the the scales weighed slightly in favor of the position advanced by many of the residents. And so I'm going to vote in favor of the recommendation. And I said I did so after, I think, carefully considering all the factors, all the relevant factors. So with that, is anybody else have anything else to say? If not, I'll call the vote.
The refusal of the planning application carries unanimously on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, Van Toborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Mar, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Right, thanks very much. And again, thank you very much for all your input. It was very helpful for all of us in terms of making what, you know, frankly, it was a difficult decision, at least for me. But I think we obviously made the right decision. Thank you. So with that, members, we're going to move on to the next item that was separated. And I believe that was twelve point two point two-one, Counselor McCurry. I believe that's the encampment network.
Correct, Mayor. Thank you very much. And through you, I do have one question of staff, if I may. During the Social Services Committee meeting and discussion on this item, we did ask for a summary by staff of the total amount of dollars expended in caring for and pursuing folks who inhabit our streets. And I'm wondering, through you, Mayor, to staff, when and at what meeting we might expect to receive that information?
Good evening. Through the mayor to the councillor, we should be able to produce that memorandum in the next one to two weeks. We're just verifying the final numbers with our finance department to ensure that the accuracy of the information.
And respecting that it is a lot of work. Thank you for that efficacy in delivering that to us. So that will come as a memo to this august group or to Social Services?
Through the mayor, it will come as a memorandum, and it will be circulated to both the city council and to county council because it's shared social services.
Very well. Thank you, Mary. Thank you for that.
Okay, not seeing any other raised hands. I'll call the vote on item twelve point two point two-one. Item twelve point two point two, cares, your name is.
Item 12.2.2, cares unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to zero. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
Right, move to item 12.3.1, the proposed rate of access on Wayne Gretzky Parkway. Uh, Counsel Kaputo, I think you've got amendment, uh, you want to bring on that one.
I do, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, if I can, I'd like to present it now. Um, I'm moving that and seconded by my wardmate Counselor Sles, um, that staff be directed to consider the proposed right in access to 195 Henry Street as part of the Wayne Gretzky Parkway Municipal Class Environmental Assessment, scheduled to begin in 2027, subject to budget approval, and that all construction costs associated with the proposed right in access shall be the sole expense of the property owner, if approved, as part of the Wayne Gretzky Municipal Class Environment Assessment. And if I could just speak to it for a minute, I would just like to say that I am still very much in favor of having this right, uh, in access be put in. But, um, certainly, uh, wanting to ensure that it goes to proper fashion. So let's add it to our, uh, our, uh, EA. That's going to be there and, uh, and then also await any input from MTO. And, uh, we'll see where it goes from there. Thanks.
Counselor Sles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think this, this coincides with what staff said, that, uh, what was brought forward initially was, uh, premature. Um, and I agree, uh, it was, but it was worth a shot. Um, it just didn't, uh, it just didn't work well. But I think, uh, this makes sense, that, uh, it, it gets included in the EA and it's looked at and reviewed and, and done through the technical process that it goes through. And, uh, if it comes out the other end with a positive, uh, recommendation, then, uh, I think everybody can breathe a sigh of relief and, and feel comfortable making that decision. And again, this is all being done at no cost to the city, but to the, uh, property owner. So I would encourage everybody to support this. It's, it's not approving putting a, a, a right, right in only. It, it's simply adding it to things to look at when the EA is being done.
Yeah, I can say that, um, I can support it as well because the EA, so for members of residents that were following this debate, the, this, this references, uh, environmental assessment, where we'll be looking at expanding the Wayne Gretzky Parkway from four lanes to six lanes, right from Henry Street up to Linden, uh, or Fairview. And to my mind, uh, a turnoff lane might be feasible when we're going through that process. I certainly don't think it would be in any way feasible with the road as it's configured now. Also, the environmental assessment process will allow for the Ministry of Transportation to have its input and state its position, because that's part of the process. So I'm quite comfortable supporting this amendment, uh, even though I did support, did not support the original version. I can support this one. So, any other discussion? Counselor Carpenter?
I will thank the Ward Two councils for their interest in Ward Four. Uh, but, uh, that was the concern I had about doing something, um, at Hawkeye, where we added a resolution to move a lane in without having a proper study. So, uh, my concern, and I spoke to Counsel Kaputo about it, was, and if we looked at it in conjunction with, with EA, you know, and the widening of Wayne Gretzky Parkway, then it would be fair to look at it in a holistic approach to what can be done down there. And there may be others that want to have, uh, something else added on as well, as a result of this. Uh, so I will support this today because we're looking for information. And just the staff, is there an extra, any extra cost in adding this parameter?
Through the chair, do you, Counselor Carpenter, no, that would be a standard process within the EA.
That's what I thought too. So that's why I could support this coming forward. Thank you.
Okay, with that, oh, Counsel McCurry.
Now, Mayor, thank you, and through you to staff. Um, I wonder if, um, if by including this, we are directing a specific study of this site or whether this would apply generally to that corridor, the, the consideration of other accesses to the limited access roadway?
Through the chair, do you, Counselor Carpenter, we would be looking in the entire...
They confuse us all the time. The hair. Yeah.
Through the chair, do you, Counselor McCurry, my apologies.
It's good to have fun at work.
We would be looking at the entire corridor, which would be the study of the project.
So that would, but, but this, this would specifically address, uh, an egress and ingress into this property only?
No, through the chair, do you, Counselor McCurry, it would be the entire project area. So we would speak to the entire area, which would include this subject property.
Thanks, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll call the vote.
Item 12.31, cares unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to zero. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
All right, as amended, any debate? Saying none, call the vote.
Item 12.3.1, as amended, cares unanimously on recorded vote and all members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
All right, we'll move to the next item, which is 12.3.4, the city of Branford real estate practice and policy. And Counselor Carpenter, you asked for this to be separated.
Yes, um, I, I support this recommendation, but I want to make a small amendment to it, item E. Uh, I believe my mover would be my wardmate Counselor Hunt, and the amendment would be, staff have it, but the amendment is, in generally, to, we also review the policy of our appointment of a member of council to the Branford Real Estate Association Board.
Sorry, we're going to just get that again, so the E, which...
And, and review the policy.
Oh, I see it's up here.
Appointment policy, okay, staff have it.
Okay, speaking of the amendment. Can they speak to the amendment? No? Okay, I'll call the vote on the amendment.
The amendment to item 12.3.4, cares unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to zero. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
So, as amended, any debate? Saying none, call the vote.
Item 12.3.4, as amended, cares unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to zero. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
So we'll move on to the fifth and last item that has been separated, and that's 12.3.8, transit fares, cash transfers. Counselor Van Tilbork, I understand you have a way forward for us.
Yes, I have an amendment. If there is, uh, no speaking to the, uh, what, what's before us on, in the, uh, extract.
Go ahead.
Very good. The amendment, uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Samwell, that clause A, B and C of item 12.3.8 be struck and replaced with the following. A, a complimentary transfer continued to be in place until June 2027. And B, costs to be within the transit operating budget. And C, that staff to update council by March 2020, March 2027 on the use of cash transfers. And, uh, the reason we have those timelines and why there is a date on there, um, I believe it has to do with that staff is, is looking at major changes to transit in which transfers may become almost obsolete. Uh, could I get confirmation on that and the, for what's coming up in the future?
Through the mayor to, uh, Counselor. Uh, phase two of the optimization study is slated to go for September of 2026. And with that provides more direct service for the customers without the need of transferring. And so much like we did with phase one, that was one of the reasons where we, we saw a decrease in people needing to transfer because of the more directness of the routes. And then phase two, when we implement that in September of 2026, it will again eliminate, uh, the possibility of more people, uh, needing a transfer. With our old system of the hub and spoke downtown, we were forcing people to transfer many ways. With the optimization plan, if you all remember, uh, part of that is to have more direct trips with higher frequencies uh, and allowing people to be able to get from point A to point B, uh, on one bus.
Thank you. And, and with that, um, that seems where we're going, but I'm kind of like, sometimes I'm from Missouri and you got to show me. So that'll give us some data on, on A, whether we get to that point in time. And B, while we're using the transfers, what is happening? And I just want to go over, Brampton Transit has exact cash and paper transits for two hours. Wolf has transit that accepts cash and it's a, and you can get a transfer and that's 90 minutes if you ask. Hamilton Street Wayway accepts cash payments and also has a paper transfer if you request it from the driver. London Transit lists cash as a payment option and you can, you can request the paper transit when you're on board. Mississauga My Way accepts cash fares and will issue a paper transfer valid for two hours. Stratford Transit accepts cash fares and issues paper transfers. And Toronto Transit still accepts cash payments, paper transfers, and they can be obtained from the bus operator, onboard streetcars or from machines on subways. And finally, Waterloo Regional, Grand River Transit accepts cash payments on buses and provides pay per transfer on request. So this will, um, relieve some of the stress that some of the members of the public had when they thought that maybe they would have to pay twice with cash because the cash was not going to allow them to transfer. This will cover that period. And by the time that, uh, 2027 comes around, staff should have us in a position where, um, and it'll be great if it's true, that we won't, uh, that the tra, the transfer system will be a thing of the past. So hopefully we will get unanimity on supporting this resolution, this amendment.
Thank you. So I'll call the vote, not seeing any other. So this is a amendment to strike in A, B and C and replace it with, uh, what you just described to us.
The amendment to item 12.3.8, cares unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to zero. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
Okay, and so we do have the resident, because there, there, I know it's an amendment, uh, but we do have a, still some whereas's. So there, uh, these were the operative clauses that we changed, but we still have the whereas's. So I, we still have to vote on the resolution. So, um, a discussion, seeing none, I'll call the vote.
And that vote cares 11 to zero on recorded vote. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
Okay, so we have, you know, version of courts. And I hope you're all impressed with how we've been sharing tonight, given that I saw that whole baseball game last night. Uh, no resolutions on the agenda, but we do have the one notice of motion. Counselor Carpenter, if you'd read the title of your notice of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I certainly will. And through you, professional act, professional activity day on municipal election day for the school board.
All right, so move to bylaws and we have, I've never seen this before.
[laughing]
One bylaw. So Counselor Van Tilbork, you have the owner's responsibility to, uh, read out the motion, to move the motion to approval. Not all bylaws, but the one bylaw.
Yes, the, the one bylaw, uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Samwell, that all bylaws not separated for discussion purposes be approved by law 100 dash 2025. Bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council, the corporation of the city of Branford with respect to the meeting held on October 28th, 2025.
I've never heard such a passionate and succinct resolution on the bylaws. Any discussion? Nope? Okay, let's call, I'll call the vote on it.
The approval of bylaw 100 2025, cares unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to zero. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sullivan, Sles McCurry, Huntman, Tilbork, Samwell Carpenter, Marn Kaputo, Sakoli and Mayor Davis.
Well, I don't know if we're going to have enough time for ward announcements because the clerk and I only have one bylaw to sign. But, uh, we'll, we'll do a very slow signing of that bylaw. And so we're going to start with Counselor Van Tilbork, ward announcements.
I have no ward announcements.
Good, Counselor Sakoli.
I also don't have ward announcements, but happy Halloween, everyone.
Counselor Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I, uh, just want to tell everybody, be careful, they children know the Halloween as usual. And congratulations to all those folks out there that decorated their houses and their, for the community and make it fun for the kids. There's been lots of them and lots of certificates given out. But I lo, I really would like to talk about the Thank of it luncheon, luncheon that we do once a year. That's coming up on November 1st, that's this Saturday. So members of council, uh, uh, in the past have volunteered to help serve. I know Counselor Martin, I don't think you've missed one, actually. I, and I've been there and Counselor Sles has been there, Sullivan's been there. Many of you have been, been to that event, uh, Counselor Samwell as well. We've been to those events. This year, we don't need as many volunteers. So, uh, you're all invited to buy a ticket and come and sit down and enjoy dinner with the, with the veterans. And I'm pleased to say that the Afghan veterans are sitting down this year. We're recognizing the Afghan veterans as well as, we have a large veteran contingency coming from Portover for this, this wonderful event. It takes place, again, November 1st. As you know, uh, if you want to attend, uh, 10 o'clock in the morning. But it's a luncheon, so the luncheon is later. But it's at the Canesville Community Hall, uh, in the county of Bran. Uh, it's fully accessible and it's a smaller venue because we are losing our veterans and there's a smaller group. So thank you all and hope to see you there. Thank you. And if you want to buy tickets, MP Larry Brock's office has tickets and that's where we're, they're being brought out to. And, and, and keep in mind as well, uh, copies are being offered for donations starting October 31st.
Yes. Counselor Kaputo.
All right, it'll be fast. Uh, Branford Station, Halloween night, there'll be, uh, handing out candies at, uh, Edward Ghoul Park. Uh, bring your own chair, bring a giant bowl, start handing them out. We also have a paint night, um, with Elm Treasures, November 8th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Thorpe Carriage House. Kids over 10 are welcomed accompanied by an adult. And don't forget that the late November, at Glenhurst, we'll have the lighting of the lights. I encourage everyone to come out and be a part of a Branford tradition and a wonderful event. Go Jays, go! And the other reason why there's only one bylaws, because it wasn't my mayor of the month term. Usually, usually there's four pages and, and I need a cough syrup after. Thanks.
Don't worry, we won't disappoint you in your month. Uh, let's see, Counsel McCurry, I think you're next.
I should go next. Thank you, Mayor. And let me say in response to your, uh, inquiry about praise earlier, I do praise your excellent efforts tonight. Uh, possibly the best performance by a chair ever following a sleepless evening. Um, let me say, first of all, uh, we have, um, people in the community may recognize that we've wrapped our traffic cabinets and, uh, we've, um, changed our game a bit and we're featuring the artwork of five individuals in the community, namely Zella Raskar, Kaylee Ellis, Juliana LeChance, Joel Proctor and Holly Enter. And I'm not sure if they're on the boxes yet, but if they're not, they will be shortly. Uh, number two, St. George Street residents, um, you've probably received some city of Branford mail this week. If you put it in the blue box without reading it, go get it out because it's, uh, an inquiry about, uh, parking proposals for your street, uh, namely in the vicinity of the beer store. Um, lastly, uh, the city budget engagement campaign is underway and you can find that on the Let's Talk Branford slash city budget page. and you can find that on the Let's Talk Branford slash city budget page or contact your city councillor. You'll be able to provide comment upfront with respect to how you think we should be spending your money.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Halloween is coming up, so be sure to watch out for all the ghouls and ghosts and goblins and superheroes that are going to be out on the street. They're not going to be watching for cars, they're concerned about collecting candy. So we have to make sure the drivers watch out for them. And with Halloween coming, the next month is Movember, which is a awareness raising for prostate cancer. So gentlemen, if you're of a certain age, make sure that you get a PSA test done with your next doctor's appointment or, or blood work that, that's coming up. The important thing with cancer is to catch it early, the earlier you catch it, the better your odds of survival. Thank you.
Councillor Hunt.
Yep, councillor Carpenter and I were pleased to attend the thirty eighth annual general meeting for the Branlon Neighborhood Association on the fifteenth of October. It was nice to see some new volunteers out and got elected to some positions. But I do want to put a call out that they are looking for volunteers for some positions. And then while we're on volunteers and neighborhood associations, we have twenty three ice rinks in our community. Most of them run by neighborhood association volunteers. And if you'd like to be a flood hero, then you can get the application on the city's website.
Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one for October twenty ninth, actually. Tomorrow, from six thirty to eight, New Life Kids will be at eighty five Plench Avenue. We'll be having a trunk or treat, wagon rides, candies, games and a photo booth. Parents are required to be present with the children though. Outside of that, please support the, the donation boxes out there for your poppies and wear them proudly. Thank you.
Last but not least, councillor Samwell.
Thank you. So first I wanted to mention that the East Ward Echo Place Neighborhood Association is hosting a Winter Wonders, Your Guide to Thriving in the Cold event. And that's being hosted at, on November eighth at Woodman Community Center at four P M. Everyone's welcome. And so they'll be discussing all of the different things that you need to be ready for the winter. So winter driving and lots of other great stuff. I also wanted to let people know that we have several vacancies for our citizen committees. So the Branford Accessibility Advisory Committee, Environmental Sustainability Policy Advisory Committee, Economic Development Tourism and Cultural Initiatives Advisory Committee and Branford Heritage Committee and Committee of Adjustments. So you can visit the city's website to see more information. Those postings will be closing on October thirty first at four thirty P M. And if you have any questions or want to reach out to the clerks department, you can do that at clerks@branford.ca. Thanks.
Councillor Sles.
Just a couple things, Mr. Mayor. Last night, the Jays got robbed. And secondly, tomorrow night, the Bulldogs are hosting Barry, the Barry Colts, who, incidentally, the Bulldogs are ranked number one in Canada.
Indeed, they are. Mr. Mayor, may I add, there's public information meeting in Ward Four on the thirtieth of October regarding the development north of Parlayne Road for the residents.
I'd like to make one announcement. It's not really an announcement that would be news to anybody, but just a reminder that of course, on November the eleventh, we have the Remembrance Day Ceremony, probably one of the most sacred of events that occurs in our community. Because going back into World War One, the general conscription rate across Canada was about seven percent. In Branford, the highest in the country, Branford, Bran County, almost twenty one percent. And so because of that, it's, it's a day that I believe is one of the most important in our calendars. And for those who'll be attending, if you want to see the procession, there is a procession from Harmony Square, including cadets and cadet marching bands. And also the fifty sixth field artillery begins at Harmony Square at about ten forty, ending at the Senateath where the ceremony will take place. So hope as many members of the community will be out with their poppies as we celebrate and recognize the sacrifice and service of those of our community who have served and paid the ultimate dues in the past. So with that, I declare-